We'll begin the work session today.
Now I know why you're sitting in the back so long. You didn't want to come up here and bring this.
I wasn't sure how fast today's meeting would go.
Everybody's just giving you a hard time.
Mark, you want to start this off?
I will. Commissioners, last week we had Public Works CIP. We talked about having a plan on our projects. This week we have Aaron in here to talk about buildings and grounds, and we need to take a similar approach to our buildings' infrastructure as we do to our roads' infrastructure, and that is to be more proactive. Aaron's been working on this since he got here. Each year we get better. That's our goal. And so we wanted to bring this forward just to kind of identify to you some of the areas that we believe are lacking and that need to be addressed. Primarily, what we set aside for maintenance of buildings, we try to, as we replace things, start to depreciate those things. Aaron has done a really good job of that. But when you build a building like this one that's, you know, over 100 years old, and you don't start setting the money aside for it the day you built it, which we didn't, obviously, back 100 years ago, they didn't do that, there's catch-up. And we're in that catch-up phase right now on all of our buildings. So Aaron has a list of projects that we know are coming. These are just the ones we know. Obviously, things come up like part of the roof falling off that you don't know. But also, we looked at industry standards on what we should be doing for our facilities, and Aaron has come up with some numbers for that. With that, I'll just kind of turn it over. We can kind of go through this if you'd like, but I know Aaron has some of the stuff he'd like to cover.
Okay. First and foremost, you have multiple pages there. First in front of you is the Capital Improvement Plan, followed by meeting minutes from the Justice Center Building Committee, and yes, that's from 2014. That was the last time they had minutes. And if you scroll all the way down to the total, the total we collect is $4.25 a square foot.
I think that's a lot, David.
It's not allowed.
Correct. If you flip back on these items, you'll also see items on there called January threw up on 23, 24. It's the entire year. And the highlighted areas underneath there, if you look at it, it says the undercharge. The undercharge is funding that I believe that we had not collected, but we spent. One thing that I would look at is we need to work with the city of Leavenworth, and we need to update our $4.25 a square foot that we are billing per square foot, per used county square footage, and use that money in a manner to work on our facility.
Commissioners, I think that that rate is what was put in place when they built the new Justice Center, 1998.
Well, it's the sales tax.
Yeah, county sales tax.
I think the agreement, Aaron, did you say it was 98?
Yeah, the contract agreement was 1998, 99.
Yeah.
On this one?
So that's the same rates for that many years?
But Mark, we weren't locked into this. This was just to get it started. We don't have no lock-in rate on any contracts saying this is what we're going to be charged.
I think we need to amend it, is the point, and we need to do that.
It wasn't forever.
It wasn't locked in.
No, I don't think there was an anticipation that we were going to charge them $4.25 a square foot. I think that it needs to be.
We're a rent-controlled county.
What's the market rate, or do you have any idea?
Well, we don't, I mean, we don't charge market rate on that facility because the people who helped pay for that facility are also the people who are paying the rent on it. So they, I mean, it's a little bit off. That's why it was only $4.25.
It used to be 11 something, Mike.
But I would say we are at least in the $15 range.
That's exactly. You marked it right on the money.
But I don't think that that would be what we would be asking this.
I think it would be more like 11, but at least it'd be a big difference.
Yeah, there needs to be a change.
Yeah.
We will, we would like to work with staff on both sides, the city and the county staff, to come up with a number, and we want to do it now so that they can budget for it next year. We're not proposing to change this year.
Sounds like a plan.
For next year's budget, so that's one of the things, and one of the things that Aaron has in here, and I'm probably stealing a little bit of his thunder, but institutionally, when you build a new building, you start setting aside a dollar a square foot for maintenance. Because our buildings are so old and we didn't set aside a dollar a square foot, I'm going to propose that we need to be setting aside $2 a square foot, if we can afford that. But at a minimum, it should be a dollar a square foot. I'm going to work with Aaron on getting those numbers for you as part of the budget. We already have some preliminary numbers on that. I don't, do you recall what that was? How many square feet we have total?
I do not have that with me currently.
It's something we're working on, but we are not setting aside a dollar a square foot right now, and we're going to work towards that as the minimum threshold. I'd like to get us towards that $2, so that when we have things like the roof falling off.
Well, that's the last time they raised the mill levy. It was before I got here, the year before. They had to raise a mill, a half a mill to pay for the roof on the Justice Center.
Because it wasn't planned.
And because it wasn't set up on a depreciation or an amortization schedule.
The other thing that we have, and I think that it makes it more difficult to manage, is every facility has their own set-off. So we set aside money per facility. I believe that we should take it as a holistic approach, that all of those funds are combined, so that if something comes up, we can use the money on whatever we need to. It's not, well, we can't dip into this pool because it's for a different building. It gives us a little bigger pool to use, and then we can repay it as we go forward.
That makes sense.
And so I'm going to, I'm going to have Aaron work on that, too, as part of the 2025 budget. We'll be consolidating all of those into one, and then we'll be putting money into one pool. And I think that will help us to level out any peaks. So if we have an unexpected expenditure, it's a lot easier for us to accomplish.
Because those big ones are ones, we're going to need to have that available. That's exactly what you're saying. I agree with you, Mark.
And we have, you know, we just added, you know, with Cushing, we doubled our, the square foot that we're responsible for, and even though those facilities are not occupied, there's still maintenance that comes as part of that.
Right.
You still have heat and water lines and everything running through there.
The roof.
Yes, you have three sections of the roof at Cushing that you'll see are on the Capital Improvement Plan as you work down through 25 through 20. I believe, I think the last one I put in there was 28. Now, sections of those roofs, since that building is broken into multiple sections, we can do it sections at a time, and spreading out those six-figure sections as doing one at a time, while you're going to see the cost of inflation in that, you're not taking a $500,000 hit or a $700,000 hit like we did at the Justice Center, but we're doing one full section at a time. And lifespan-wise, we have some areas that they had replaced and three sections that they had not, that are a four ply with top mop and pebble, and moving away from that to either an EPDM or a cap system roof over the top of them. And moving forward, we've worked with local roofing company to take care of some of the leaks that we had in a couple of areas. Last rain we had, we were dry, so we're still working on patching while we work towards a capital improvement plan to push towards roofs. The most important one for 2024 is the courthouse, and you'll see $400,000 in that number underneath there. That $400,000 was the original estimate that I got for just the emergency repairs. That $400,000 number is a placeholder. It is not the number that this is going to turn out to. You can already tack on 90 grand on top of that, or 80-plus, when we added structural engineer and architectural, and then the construction company that's going to be on-site to do all of the testing on the cornice on the outside. That number was put in there as that was the only solid number that I had on an emergency estimate.
That was just in the two areas we knew were, you could see from the ground. So it's going to be much more than that, and that doesn't address the system of the overhang. That entire system needs to be evaluated. So we'll know more. We've signed the agreements yesterday, I think it was, to get them started on the full evaluation, and I don't know if you have that scheduled yet.
I'm waiting for an email response on the schedule and timeline for Mid-Continental to work with Trainer HL on coming out, and then setting up a schedule for them to do all of the testing on the cornice and the water table on the outside of the building. You'll also look on there, and it says Cushing Multi-Stack Chiller Repairs. That is a redundant system over at Cushing, and they have the original chiller, and they have the multi-stack that they put in. Well, when they put the multi-stack in, instead of switching to one that was under warranty, they kept it as a backup for two years, let it run out of warranty, then tried to switch to it as their primary, and it had all kinds of issues on the inside. Since we have taken it over, the original goal when we were doing the remodel work was to use funding in the remodel to repair that multi-stack chiller with overages on pipes and floors, or end slab floor drains that were completely rusted all the way through. And that was an item that I had to cut. And looking back at that, that's one of the items that, since the chiller that we are running off of, and I don't have a redundant, I need to make sure that I'm not counting on an original chiller to the building to make sure that I have cool air for our council on aging or for our guiding lights or for case state extension. That is my priority over at Cushing would be to move that multi-stack under the 24 budget for it to get repairs. EMS parking lot number two, it also falls under the courthouse general because all of our buildings that are not specific, like the Justice Center or the Cushing building, fall under our courthouse general monies. The parking lot in the Tonganoxi is atrocious.
It's been bad since '09.
It is to the point now where we are looking at removing the base and starting over. I've discussed with Mr. Miller about the possibility of running a concrete circle all the way around and asphalting the areas to the side of it, but creating a driveline where they're turning so that that way we get longer life out of the asphalt we do put down, since those ambulances follow the same path in and out all the time, and they're a heavier equipment. That will be an option. I set money aside for that. Those would be your major projects if the courthouse doesn't need all of my reserves.
Can we go back to the boilers over to Justice Center?
Yep, 400.
And that'll take care of it, or is that just?
Yes, sir. That's replacing both Cleaver Brooks with two cabinets, 90 efficiency. I specked out, when I, I've received two estimates. Both of them were labeled as budgetary estimates, and when companies give you budgetary estimates, they know, they give you the number they know they can get at, and then plan, and they're going to be under that. I fell in somewhere, I fell in somewhere below those estimates on purpose. That would be two cabinet-style 98-plus efficient boilers, which would replace the Cleaver Brooks. That's adding a redundant pump, so then that way we never are out of heat on there. So if a pump goes down, we're still circulating water and going back to a redundant. The boilers that I would spec out would match the exact same ones that are at Cushing, two, two and a half million BTUs, so that parts-wise, if we had an issue, we could interchange.
Yeah, makes sense.
Due to previous years under COVID where we had issues getting parts, and it was a 25, 50-week parts, I thought it best to spec something that would almost be interchangeable so that two of my buildings could be covered, and we could rob from Peter to cover Paul if we had a catastrophic failure.
Sounds good.
And then that parking lot at Tonganoxi EMS station, it's, it started out as a chip seal parking lot, then it was asphalt, and it's just, there's been so much salt and water getting down into that base. It's a total rehab.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we were talking about this in the 90s, that it needed to be totally rebuilt.
And like I said, those would be my major projects, first and foremost, because EMS, that parking lot's not getting any better. It's only getting worse. I did do, after consideration and conversations with county administrator, the circle drive at the back of the Justice Center is an issue. It's an issue now. But as was pointed out to me, heat is more important than a circle drive, especially since the fact that we have inmates in there that we can't send anywhere. And if we do send anywhere, it's costly for the county. So first and foremost, priority number one would be replacing the Cleaver Brooks and going to two cabinet systems. Following year, if I have funding for it, would be the Sallyport replacement at the Justice Center. And that would be the entire circle drive on the backside that is, it's just salt's eating away the concrete. You have a curb system back there that needs to change to almost create it like a bowl and use the drain that they have instead of draining it to one side and trying to bowl it a little bit, let it drain straight, go out to the gutter system, so then that way we can hopefully not have this kind of issue where it's getting.
Aaron, was that updated not too long ago, or am I thinking of some other area?
That was, no, the back parking lots, we had mill and overlay, mill and overlay, and then to follow a schedule so that we didn't go into the point where we were, we crack sealed last year and slurry coated, so that way we extend the life out of our asphalt as much as possible. Those, we're trying to take care of the asphalt that we had and we replaced and we spent the money on, rather than just saying, eh, well, we'll skip the chip.
Okay.
Or we'll skip the ceiling. We're trying to make sure it lasts as long as possible. But that concrete section in back where all the deliveries and the police come in, that area would be my identified. If I had the money in '24, I would do it, but I don't, so 25.
And we need to figure out making sure when we do, I mean, because of salt, that we're putting that, a way of getting that off of that concrete ASAP instead of having it to where it sits, because it is, that is the enemy of concrete.
Correct, ma'am. So currently, back in the backside of the Sallyport, you have a sewer gutter, and you have your call system. I've talked with Sheriff Dedeky, and that call system is for cops to enter in the building with, when they, when they have somebody in their car. What we would propose doing when we rip out that concrete is move the call box to the exit and have the exit become the entrance and then circle out. But then all of that area with that bowl, you could get rid of that salt as quickly as possible to hopefully, and it doesn't have to be a large bowl. It just needs to be a small. But then that way, it's keeping that concrete as clean as possible.
That's why you see your idea doing that is a good idea, because it's just, it is, you know, what that does to concrete is, it's the enemy.
You'll also look on there, the mill and overlay and 25 of the handicap entrance. Handicap entrance is one of those entrances that they created when they remodeled the courthouse. They have not touched that asphalt since then. These are our most vulnerable, walking in with issues of stability, and that area needs to be addressed, which is why it fell up on the priority list, moving to 25 behind the outside.
20 years ago.
Yes, sir.
Everybody moved down to courthouse and went to the post office.
You're two years short of it. '06.
Was it '06?
It was when you moved back in.
Oh, yeah, when we moved back. Yeah, it's when the big project would be completed.
Yep.
Remember we moved out in '04.
I.
Not too many things last one a year.
I'm completely open to any questions on this, but the biggest thing in the room right now is the outside of the building. These, these projects are ones that we've identified as priority projects, pushing out to a five-year goal. In our line of work with buildings and grounds, you always have emergencies. You always have issues like when a hot water tank goes, and I spend 17 grand. The assumptions to the side are under the current $125,000 we put away for all of our buildings. While it says it's under the Capital 215, those are for all of your buildings besides the Justice Center and the courthouse. So all three EMS stations, the county shop, the five grand that the transfer station gets a year, that 125 is to take care of all of those buildings, which is why the county administrator said that we're looking to move to a square foot price. And while we'll look at metal buildings don't need the $2 or that, but we're looking to make an adjustment so that we can start putting enough away that we don't have surprises for the taxpayers.
Yeah.
That's good.
We're getting on the right track, yeah.
Taxpayers don't like surprises.
No, sir.
But delayed maintenance is going to bring lots of surprises when you delay the maintenance on.
Is there any good time to have the real reality of what your infrastructure costs you?
No, I mean, I know we're guilty. We kicked the can down the road. That's all there is to it.
So I can continue down through the line if you'd like.
This is, this is finally the things that have happened to us. Sometimes it opens your eyes up. We kicked it down there, but I think these are things we're going to put in place so we can get more prepared than we have in the past. I like what you've done, Aaron.
I do, too, but I'm just really concerned about this year's budget and our.
It's not going to be an easy budget.
So with the building, once you get all the estimates. And together, do you think there's a good chance that that can be split over two fiscal years, or we'll be able to divide the work over time?
I think there's going to be an emergency portion of it that has to happen right away, and then there's going to be an ongoing maintenance portion.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, the ongoing maintenance will be split over however many years we think we can get out of it. But when we do the emergency portion, you know, if we're looking at, let's just say conservatively, 25% of that overhang needs to be replaced, and I think that's very conservative. I think it's going to be, it's going to be more than that. But let's just say conservatively, 25% needs replaced. Well, how long out before the rest of it? So would it make sense for us to go ahead and get it done now?
Yeah, it is heavy.
Instead of having, again, we'll look at it. We're going to evaluate that. But the last thing we want is to do 25% of it, just do what we have to.
Yeah, they're sorry.
When the mobilization is on going, when it's going, because otherwise, if you put it off, you're increasing the cost again.
The hardest part about their phasing plan where they're coming out is they're going to come out, and their Phase 1 is going to investigate the entire outside cornice of it. They're going to be able to give you with their testing what they feel needs to be replaced, and it will be a large section. In the back of your mind, I want you to picture the two sections that they gave you, which are the northeast and northwest corners. The one above the chiller, if you look to the west side, and the east side that fell off. Those two numbers were right around 400 grand. That's before we started bringing in expert testing and what they're going to look at.
So Aaron, would it be an option to just remove the entire eve around the building?
You are a historical building.
Historical building.
You are on the historical.
I understand, so is there, is there a possibility of doing that without the historical society?
You'd have to get permission to do it.
I highly doubt it. I think you would have a very large uphill battle with not only the local historical society, but also the state.
Yeah. Well, and they also changed the roof to work with the current layout. So taking that away may mean that you have to redo the roof at the same time, so it may not be a safe.
Is there any potential for qualifying for grants?
I worked with Janet on that question, and she is working with the historical society. She reached out to them. There is opportunities through the historical society for grant money. The funding on that would be for the 2025 year.
Which is fine.
We'll work to apply to those grants for this historical society, and then I'll probably end up working with Tom as well.
That's.
We actually applied for a grant when we redid the outside where the entrance was having some issues. We actually applied for grant funding at that time, and were turned down.
On your end.
And the reason, I think the reason they gave us was, when we're giving out these grants, we look at who has the ability to pay for this. The grants we're giving to these other people, they don't have the ability to make it up here in the county, so.
So since you brought that up, what I wanted to talk about in this meeting this morning was, we're always looking for alternative funding sources. You know, we provide EMS, since we're talking about repairs to the EMS facility, we provide EMS services to the cities, for instance. Asking them to help pitch in on this because it's for EMS is one thing, but city folks already pay county taxes, property taxes. But some of the other big brothers in this county, like Fort Leavenworth, for instance, and the federal government, do not pay any property tax. So EMS, for instance, $0 comes from Fort Leavenworth, but we provide EMS service up there. So now we're looking at these costs to maintain EMS, above and beyond the $2 million that costs us to operate EMS, that Fort Leavenworth pays $0 toward. So their MOU with the county is up this year. So I've been talking to them about renegotiating our MOU from the county to Fort Leavenworth for EMS services. I don't see how we can continue to offer them EMS services for zero fees since they don't pay any property tax to help us with EMS. So I think one of the alternative income approaches we need to take the, talk about with this, is asking, I'm constantly getting these brochures from Fort Leavenworth saying, hey, we love this being the number-one retirement community in the military. Anything you need, just let us know. Anything we can do to make things better, you just tell us what you need. I think this is a perfect example.
I gave you the emails.
Yep. I think this is a perfect example. We need to renegotiate our MOU with Fort Leavenworth, point out, here's $100,000 that's going to cost us, above and beyond the $2 million every year that you guys aren't helping us pay for. So could you maybe?
How is the MOU that's getting ready to expire? Is it a three-year or a five-year?
It was 15-year, I think.
Maybe they'll come to the table now, because that's a long time ago, Jeff.
Yeah.
I think it's a good point to ask.
Yeah.
And what, what kind of money are we talking about in that kind of a?
I think it's up to us to tell, to ask them.
The way I see it, there's two big brothers in this. There's the county and Fort Leavenworth that have the money for paying for EMS. The cost is $2 million. Besides this, the cost is $2 million a year. I think we need to split that in half.
That'd be, just set it up as a mill, not a dollar amount.
Yeah.
Whatever that brings in.
Yeah, it'd be easier that way.
I think so, and that way it'd take care of inflation.
You know I'm willing to help you with anything we can need to do with that.
And everybody, like I said, I talked to on the federal side on all this stuff, the pilot checks, and they said, yeah, nobody's brought it up before. Nobody's, as far as we know, nobody's asked for this before. So in the dire straits that our budget's in this year, is, I think, time to ask.
Yeah, I agree, Jeff.
So what's the process normally when one of those MOUs comes up to be renegotiated? Is it all, is it an automatic process, or do we have to approach them? Or just tell me what that process is.
I think that you have the opportunity to, obviously, we'll bring it to the board and discuss it, and then we'll present something to them for their consideration. And either they'll accept it, or then maybe they'll counter. But in the past, really, the MOU was basically saying, we'll provide services, they'll open the gate. I mean, there's no, there's no financial obligation from either side, other than we're providing the services.
And it says in there, we're allowed to bill.
How's the process to do this? Will this have to be shipped back up to DC? Be signed all funds? It's a federal?
I don't know on their side of the, I don't know if the Garrison Commander negotiates that, or if it has to go to somebody in DC.
Well, I'm the one who goes to Washington, DC.
Either way, we'll notify them and.
We'll send it with you.
And in the MOU, it says we are allowed to bill the passengers' insurance companies. But that doesn't address the $2 million that it's costing us.
We subsidize EMS. The fees that we collect do not adequately cover the services that we provide, so it's subsidized via the taxpayers, which is true nearly everywhere. I'm not, I'm not familiar with any government ran EMS that makes money or breaks even even.
Well, now we're providing services to civilians that live up there, too, so.
Yeah, so I think it's important.
Did you hear from the undersecretary?
I gave him all of this, because I, now that I'm going to.
None of this, though, was really germane to the work session that we're having.
He and I can get back on that, but I kind of turned it over to Jeff to have continuity.
I'd like to stay focused on buildings and grounds.
Mark wants to stay focused, so move on.
I'm pretty sure Aaron is like, I have no idea why we're having this.
Sorry.
We tend to drill.
No, I just didn't know if you had any further questions on the capital improvement plan that was before you.
No. I think it's a good job. You hit, you hit the priorities, I think, too, Aaron. I like what I see.
I will.
You're doing a good job, but it's too bad it happened right now.
This is going to be the tough year.
I'm not sure if I understood. It's too bad he's doing a good job right now, or I'm not sure.
Too bad the building situation is so.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's never, never a good thing. And we will have a work session on the other things.
Yeah, we know.
It's too bad we don't have a rainy day fund.
Pick it up.
As we work forward with our budget cycle and moving forward, I'm going to work with county administrator to shift to a per-square-foot pricing. We'll break those down. We'll give you costs. It'll adjust the CIP on where that is, and then working with him as well on how you would like to funnel capital money and how that will work forward. So then from there, with his direction, with your direction, we'll put a plan together to make sure that we cover the county as much as possible.
And this is what happens when you cut the budget so tight over the years that you do not have a rainy day fund.
And when you defer maintenance all along the way.
You can't even do maintenance.
You go, combine both of those things, and you hit walls. Buying both of those things, and you hit walls.